Tonight, the item will be led by City Council's own from the Fairfield District, Ms. Teresa Johnson. The pledge. Erica was nice enough to volunteer to lead us this evening. At this time, please rise if you're able and silence yourself, thanks.
Father, we thank you, God, for this is the day that the Lord has made, and we can rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, God, for how you brought us safely. Once again, we thank you for your constant, constant love that you show towards us. Father, we ask that you might bless this council meeting. Those that are present, even bless their homes. Father, help us to make the right decisions that we can help the city of Huntington. We ask you a continuing blessing around our city. To our city of Huntington, we need your help. We need your guidance. You said in all your ways, acknowledge you, and you direct our path. Father, we thank you, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa and Erica, thank you very much. Next item is roll call, Ms. Miller.
Mr. Archer.
President.
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
Ms. Blau is absent. Ms. Hawley?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lehman is absent. Ms. Mound?
Here.
Ms. Rumball?
Here.
Mr. Schockley?
Present.
Mr. Sweeney is absent.
All right, we do have a quorum. Item number three is a synopsis of the last meeting.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Mound, a second from Ms. Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
We're going to cover some well-known topics today about public safety and infrastructure and our efforts to improve the economy. With public safety, it's always about drugs and homelessness, right? There's a toxic intersection between the two, and our fight against the drug epidemic, the opioid epidemic specifically, is going to continue. The lawsuit that you're all very familiar with, as you know, the Fourth Circuit overturned it, and we have our first hearing in front of Judge Faber coming up on December 16th, so next Tuesday, we'll be in Charleston, and I'll be sure to give you an update with what we hear. The second thing is about the hub. All the operations continue to go well. We are averaging about 90 people a night there. It is a work in process. Last week, we formally established the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's called the Huntington Homeless Services Hub, or the Hub. It is an effort by Valley Health, OVP, Marshall Health, the Cabal County Commission, and we've also invited others to join us, like Prestera, the City Mission, and Harmony House. So as we continue to build the coalition, I'll keep you updated, but the nonprofit has been established. The city still owns the buildings. Then this nonprofit's going to run the operations of the hub once it's fully up and running, when it takes over from Valley Health. On to infrastructure, a topic that I touched on probably first with you in the budget hearing, is about Dietz Hollow in Guyandot. We know that that is a decades-long problem, an environmental problem. We have stopped accepting shipments to the landfill, but it has not been capped. And so, the Department of Environmental Protection has issued several orders. We are trying to comply with them. I'm working directly with the DEP now, along with our legislators, trying to find a long-term solution. As a reminder, this is a $25 million liability that the city has. It goes back to the mid-'90s, that we have not addressed it, and so we will do our best to try to mitigate all the environmental concerns and put an end to that as soon as we can. Lastly, to the economy, and this really goes back to good government. We talked back in August about all of the overdue refuse fees, municipal fees, and the liens that we've been filing against residents that are not holding their civic pact with us to pay the fees. The progress so far, first of all, for the liens that we filed, owners with past due municipal and refuse fees, this year, we filed almost 800 liens. That goes back to the beginning of the year and collected $320,000. That's in the course of normal business. In addition to that, the additional effort that we took was to file lawsuits against the people that are really not paying us. We have filed so far 78 lawsuits, and we have collected $280,000 to date. So combined total of $600,000 from this effort to get people to pay what they owe. Again, these are efforts that I believe are not anything extraordinary, it's doing the ordinary things extraordinarily well. I give great credit to our legal department, the city attorney and his staff, who's doing a lot of war work to try to get this done. I've heard word from the Cabal County courthouse where they're like, "What's going on? We're seeing, you guys are filing so many lawsuits, and we're just trying to collect the money that we're..." So, all's going well, and that's my report for today.
All right, thank you, Mayor Farrell. Item number five is the... Three, is that me?
It moves. It was down here at Planning Commission the other night.
Okay. Item number five is the second of three readings of inordinance, 2025-0-44. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance authorizing the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain extensions, additions, betterments, and improvements to the existing public sewerage system of the city of Huntington, and financing the costs thereof, et cetera.
Mr. Brian Bracy, good evening.
Yes, sir. Brian Bracy, Executive Director of the Huntington Water Quality Board. Before you is an ordinance. It's the second reading in the ordinance for financing of the two pump stations that have been out for bid, which we received, for 13th Street West and 4th Street Pump Station. This is an ordinance that was previously approved by City Council. Our funding agencies have asked us to run the ordinance again, to put some specific language in around the debt forgiveness, which you have already received and have seen in the ordinance itself. I'm here with John Stump, he's happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Brian or John?
All right.
We'll move this one to a third reading. Thanks, sir. Item six is the second of three readings of inordinance, 2025-0-45. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance authorizing the refunding of the outstanding sewer revenue bond Series 2015A, tax exempt. The outstanding sewer revenue refunding revenue bond, Series 2022A, and the outstanding stormwater refund bond, refunding bond anticipation notes, Series 2023, of the city of Huntington, West Virginia, through the issuance by the city of not more than $16 million in every but principal amount of combined sewer and stormwater system refunding revenue bonds, Series 2026E, tax exempt, et cetera.
Mr. Bracy, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Before you is the second reading in the ordinance. This is an ordinance that was previously approved by City Council. This ordinance allows the Huntington Sanitary Board and the Huntington Stormwater Utility to actually merge together. Because the Huntington Stormwater, Huntington Sanitary Board has been through a lot of financing as they got underway with their construction of their projects, we were required to rerun the ordinance in light of all the different changes that we've had for the financing of those projects itself. Mr. Stump and myself are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Stump and Mr. Bracy?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I'll, if you, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind if I make a comment relative to what the mayor said, and relative to our attorney and his staff. The Sanitary Board and the Stormwater Utility have both been piggybacking the efforts for those that are delinquent in their fees, especially for the water quality fees for the Huntington Stormwater Utility. So many of the lawsuits, they've also, we piggybacked on those, and their efforts, and we're very appreciative of the work that the staff here have been doing, because this makes a big difference for the Stormwater Utility, as you know, that has a pretty tight budget and a lot of responsibility. So, just want to say thanks out and shout out to the legal team here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will move that on to a third reading as well. Item seven is the second reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-47. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to provide additional police services to the United States Postal Inspection Service.
Mr. Ado.
Thank you.
Second.
We had a motion by Ms. Mound, a second by Stacy Jo. Right. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Charnby, Deputy Chief, Huntington Police Department. The Huntington Police Department is requesting your approval for Mayor Farrell to enter into agreement with the United States Postal Inspection Service. This agreement will allow us to designate specific Huntington Police Officers as federal Task Force Officers to work directly with the U.S. Postal Inspectors to attack a major high-volume supply of narcotics that are flowing into our city through the mail system. We will assign one of our existing drug unit detectives to serve as a federal task force officer. This will require, by this MOU, our detective to work at least 24 hours a week with the United States Postal Inspection Service on investigations. The city will receive, in return from this, a force multiplier with a federal designation for our detective with the ability and authority to interdict packages and build cases on these type of crimes. It provides financial and logistic support for the Huntington Police Department with fully reimbursing all overtime for that detective work on their task force cases. It will also, the Postal Inspection Service will also provide a direct stipend to the Huntington Police Department to cover costs for a vehicle for that task force officer. It'll provide federal equipment, like cell phones and computers, for these investigations, and also access to their forensic crime lab. Furthermore, the MOU ensures that all seized assets will be equally shared between Huntington Police Department and the federal postal inspection service, averaging a 40-60 split. For all these reasons, we believe this will be a great factor for us to not only investigate, but stop the flow of drugs into our city through this system. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Deputy Chief?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And there won't be really dumb, like the last ones.
No, there are not.
No dumb questions, right? Just dumb people. Okay, so, the 40-60, would you get the 40 or the 60?
We would get the 40.
We get the 40? All right. And then, my other question is, so this is the first year we're doing this, right? For the first time, we're going to enter this MOU?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. What, in the, I'm trying to come up with a word for it, like, metrics-wise, do we have something to compare it to from years past? Like, obviously, we would measure success by we've seized X pounds of heroin. I don't know, I'm not, the drug language will loss on me, but do we have anything to compare it to, so that we know, okay, last year, maybe we intercepted this much? Or, you can get back to me.
Statistics from the postal service? Yes. Our office, the U.S. Postal Inspection Service and the Cabal-Wayne Counties, for the fiscal years of 2022 to 2024, have already seized 4,780 grams of fentanyl, 5,310 grams of methamphetamine, and over $277,000 in currency, and 11 firearms. And that's before we have been able to add our component of the investigations, our knowledge of the drug trade in this area, and to help establish and investigate these crimes.
So that's over, you said 2022, '23, so that's over two years, so we can look at over years' average and see, I just think it'd be interesting to see.
Absolutely.
What we can do as, you know, from a success.
Absolutely. The postal investigative service are very excited about it because of their lack of ability to investigate major crimes in this area because of personnel, and they're hoping that this task force agreement will really help us establish that here.
Thank you.
I have a comment. My dad is a 31-year retired letter carrier, so he is absolutely, like, this is fantastic, and I wish it all the best.
We're very excited about it. We believe that this could be a substantial benefit to our community.
It will be huge.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll also throw in a comment. I think, I personally know people who've attempted, well, they've gone to jail, whatever, but attempted to have narcotics mailed to them. It's, it blows, yes. I find it baffling what people will try to get away with. And so, I, anyway, I, is there, I do have kind of a question. Is there a way to quantify if it was a 40-60 split, what type of fiscal reimbursement the department is expecting? Is there any expectation outside of like, oh, well, here's $75,000 for a vehicle, here's $15,000 for laptops and equipment and use of a crime lab? But how the rest of it is?
We have no clear expectation right now. We don't know how this is, we're hoping to see the magnitude of investigation, seizures go up a tremendous amount, but there's no way to really quantify that right now.
Thank you. It's going to be great.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Ms. Miller, please call the room.
Item number seven, yes, sir. Ms. Mound?
Yes.
Ms. Rumball?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney is absent. Ms. Blau is absent. Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Blau absent. Ms. Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman absent. Mr. Schockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item eight is the first reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-48. Ms. Miller.
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised concerning Article 151 Federal State Advisory Commission, Article 153 Artisan Cultural Advisory Commission, Article 155 Beautification Advisory Commission, Article 157 Recreation Advisory Commission, Article 159 Board of Stationery Engineers repealed, Article 1, excuse me, 161 Civic Arena Department Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Article 167 Regional Planning Commission.
Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Erica Hernandez, Assistant City Attorney. The ordinance before you removes several defunct commissions. Of those included, only one has had any appointments since before 2002, and that was the Beautification Advisory Board in 2012, which is, was the precursor to what is now Huntington and Bloom. The ordinance also removes the Civic Arena Department and the Civic Arena Board, and replaces them with the acknowledgement of continued participation and support of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The CBB has not been solely a City of Huntington entity for many years. The current CBB operates under an intergovernmental agreement with the city, contributing five appointees to the board. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hernandez? All right, we'll move that on to a second reading. The next item, number nine, is a resolution, 2025-r-19. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide the city with an integrated software system.
Mr. Arthur moved to adopt.
To adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Arthur, a second by Ms. Holly Smith-Mout. Kasan, good evening.
Good evening. This amendment, excuse me, this resolution will allow the mayor to amend our existing software agreement with Tyler Enterprises for our Tyler Tech ERP system. We will be adding two new modules to our platform and removing an old model that we will discontinue using. The new annual software-as-a-service agreement would be $252,003, with the net impact to our current agreement for both of these softwares added, to be $26,283. This will be paid out of the City of Huntington Technology Department's contracted services budget line. Any questions?
Any questions of council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Next item on our agenda, item number 10 is a resolution, 2025-r-117. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish labor and materials for asbestos testing services.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Archer, a second by Ms. Holly Smith-Mout. Good evening, Mr. Dan Underwood.
Good evening, Dan Underwood, Purchasing Director, A and R Fifth Avenue. As stated, the resolution is to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for asbestos testing services. This will be for a one-year contract with option to renew for four additional one-year terms. This will be in support of our demolition program of dilapidated and unsafe housing. We did place this out of bid and received four bids for this work, with the low bidder being A-Star Bateman out of Charleston, West Virginia, to perform this work at an hourly rate of $33.50 and a per-test fee of $12 per sample. A-Star has done this workforce in the past. Funding for this will come from the general fund and from Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds. Gladly answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Dan Underwood?
Mr. Chair, a comment. I appreciate the tie. I'm glad the best ties are back. Thank you.
I apologize. I wasn't here to wear it at one time. It won't be a situation.
It's all right. You're back, and that's what matters. We appreciate it.
Anyone from the public?
Question. Is this strictly residential or?
Can you come to the podium, please? Can you come up to the podium? Yes, sir.
For this contract, is it strictly residential? Because I heard him talk about housing, or is this also commercial, such as school buildings?
Mr. Underwood, could you address? Thank you, sir.
While it is, for majority of the work is residential, it can also be for commercial buildings as well, if demolition is needed.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 11 is a resolution, 2025-r-118. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Jeffrey S. Shields to a first term on the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Teresa Johnson, a second by Ms. Stacy Jo Harley. And?
Personnel committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of council? Anyone from the public on the appointment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the appointment is approved. Item 12 is a resolution, 2025-r-119. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Robert Rod Duncan to a first term on the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Archer, a second by Mr. Arthur.
The personnel committee met on this as well and voted to forward to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Next item on our agenda, item number 13, resolution 2025-r-120. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Tri-Tech Software Systems, a Central Square Technologies LLC company, to provide the Huntington Police Department with a primary records management system.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Archer, and a second by Mr. Arthur. Deputy Chief, welcome back.
Mike Charnby, Huntington PD. The Police Department is requesting approval for the mayor to enter into a contract with Tri-Tech Software Systems, a Central Square Technology Company. This is for the annual renewal of our public safety software system. This is in the amount of $82,907.68. This system is the department's primary records management platform, and it supports essential daily operations, including case reporting, data management, evidence tracking, and crime reporting. Central Square is a proprietary sole-source system that has been in place for several years and integrates our existing hardware. The renewal covers required licensing, maintenance, support services, and server infrastructure. The funding budget for this will come from the Huntington Police Department's FYI-26 budget out of our contracted services. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Charnby? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. The next item on our agenda is a resolution, 2025-r-121. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the commitment of project funds for the Cabal-Huntington-Wayne Home Investment Trust Fund.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Archer, a second by Ms. Stacy Jo Harley. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable council members, thank you. Shannon Stevens, Home Program Manager. As the city of Huntington is the lead entity in the Cabal-Huntington-Wayne Housing Consortium, this resolution is to approve our HUD Home Investment Partnership Funds for the construction of a single-family home. The developer of the home is the Religious Coalition for Community Renewal, RCCR, a nonprofit with decades of experience with similar projects. The three-bedroom new construction will be built at 1664 10th Avenue, currently a vacant lot, and will be sold to an income-qualified first-time home buyer. This resolution provides $160,000 of our funds toward the project, which has an overall construction budget of $223,000. RCCR will identify the first-time income-qualified home buyer through their homebuyer counseling pipeline. They counsel new buyers in mortgage application readiness, budgeting, home maintenance, et cetera, and they have an ongoing process even after the person is in the home. This project was unanimously approved by our board, the board of the Cabal-Huntington-Wayne Housing Consortium, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a comment, this is really cool. RCCR does great stuff. I'm excited to see a house lineup.
I agree. Yes, and we look forward to partnering with them on many such projects. We've been in need of someone to kind of fill that space. Obviously, we've done a lot of large developments, but single-family homes is a big need, so agreed.
Any other questions, comments, from council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 15, resolution 2025-r-122. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Sonia Bietal to a first term on the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Huntington.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion by Holly Smith-Mout, and a second by Stacy Jo Harley.
And the personnel committee met and voted for this to full council with a favorable recommendation as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 16 is a resolution, 2025-r-126. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Matthew W. Smith to a first full term on the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Huntington, ending on January 1st, 2029.
Mr. Ado.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Archer, a second by Ms. Stacy Jo Harley.
The personnel committee met on this as well and voted to forward to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of council on the appointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. This brings us to item number 17, good and welfare. Ms. Miller.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Norman Branch, the Executive Director, CEO, founder of Positive People Association, located at 1637 8th Avenue, Huntington, West Virginia. We are a community-based organization, we're a community organization, community development organization that promotes education and health through various forms of art and theater arts, art skills, that, interactive multimedia, so that's filmmaking, podcasting, short broadcasting. So we teach workforce as far as career development skills, so not want to say workforce, because I know we have a lot of workforce organizations, but we are, we work with youth, at-risk youth, and youth and young adults. We have an after-school and summer program that we operate at the J.L. Scott Community Center, and we've been there for the last seven years. The J.L. Scott Community Center has been in the Fairfield community since 1928. What I'm here to do is just kind of make awareness that we have received an eviction notice from the Huntington Housing Authority, Executive Director Larry Ellis, to be removed, a field forced out of the J.L. Scott Community Center, ending our programs, closing the doors, and we were just looking for an answer and a reason to why, after seven years of service, with no violations or anything that would... with no violations or anything that would violate the lease agreement or, in our opinion, to disrupt anything that's happening in there. But what is about to happen is if these doors do get shut, he's going to close down a program that, in the last summer, registered thirty kids for a summer program. Twenty-one actively completed the seven-week summer program. We have, like I said, several programs going in there now. Boxing program that has ten kids registered to the boxing program. Our media programs that have children and young youth and young adults, even Marshall students, participate in these programs. But I want to say that's going to affect... I know it was great, Mayor, your mayor's today? Opened up the meeting by saying, you guys are strict on public health and safety. If the doors get shut down, where are you going to push these kids out to? What are they going to do? Between the hours of six and eight in America, that is prime time for teenagers to commit crimes. We have effectively had kids come into our program, eat food, get clothing, get tutoring, have kids come over by the center, come inside, rest, lay their heads down, take a nap, or anything that they need, they come to the center. And I understand that we have the Eddie Lewis Community Center in our area, but that is also a need, and why both centers need to stay open and operating. I'm gonna jump around, because I have my nose, but my phone died only, so my talking points is kind of all over the place. But I guess, I don't know how much the city can do. I know it's a federally ran program. But I'm just trying to make an appeal on behalf of residents of Fairfield, on behalf of the citizens of Huntington. We have collaborated with many organizations in Huntington. We still collaborate with many nonprofits and businesses. So I do want to thank, I see many council members up here that have supported Positive People Association. And without the support of the people, you know, we wouldn't still be able to operate for seven years and still growing our programs. So we do want to express our gratitude and our thanks to our community, to the Huntington community, for that, for their assistance, whether it's financially, whether it was just, you know, having us collaborate with other programs, with having our kids be able to get involved in civic engagement. We've done a lot of things. I could go back and I could show you, you can jump on our website, positivepeopleassociation.com, and see the programs that we're operating, see the things that we have done. So I don't know how much the council can do. I don't know how much, Mayor, I know we've talked, I don't know how much you guys can do, but I would just would ask if anybody could reach out to ask the Board of Housing, Larry Ellis, you know, keep the doors open, continue to let Positive People Association create programs, work with the youth of this city, and just at least give us an answer to why. Like I said, it's a historical building to the community. It's a fabric in Huntington, West Virginia, says been there since nineteen-twenty-eight. It has served hundreds, thousands of members from Huntington. It has helped shape their lives positively, helped save their lives, giving people an idea of what they want to become in life when you grow up. So just, if you can, just hear him speak on that, and just hopefully we can keep the doors open.
Thank you, sir. All right. And he was the only one to sign up today? Thank you. Let's start with Ms. Stacy Jo tonight.
Well, thank you. I wasn't here last meeting. I was in Florida. I really don't have much to say, but I would like to say to the residents of Guyandot that I have had, and I am not joking when I say this, at least one-hundred phone calls, emails, voice messages, text messages regarding a low-income apartment complex that could potentially be built in Guyandot. And I understand every person that I have personally talked with or received their messages, whatever, they're negative. So I hear your concerns. They are valid. I understand. I did make a post on my city page, so if you're listening and you haven't seen it, go read it, because that is all the information that I know. And if I found out more information, then I'll be happy to spread it. And I encourage everybody to come to the meeting on September the sixteenth to speak. And I was told that if you are not able to come... Oh, December. What'd I say? Ouch. I wish it was September. December sixteenth, excuse me. If you're not able to come, I was told that you could bring your letter here, a handwritten or typed letter to City Hall, and they will notarize it for you. And that will ensure that your letter with your concerns are read during the meeting. That's it.
Ms. Teresa Johnson. All right. Ms. Dea Rumball.
Eight oh six on the clock, just for reference, everybody. I've confirmed with legal that we're allowed to speak for fifteen minutes on any particular question, so I just want to make sure I don't go over fifteen minutes even. But I don't think that's the case with Good and Welfare. It's less than fifteen minutes, right?
Or you take all the time you need, Ms. Dea.
That's very kind of you to say. All right. So actually, the first thing I want to talk about is the Keith Albee. And tomorrow, there is like a free movie night, Christmas holiday night event for the next three Tuesdays. I think tomorrow they're showing the movie Elf. Next week, It's a Wonderful Life. Hopefully, next Tuesday, I'll be able to take my kids to that one. And then I think the week after that, it's The Grinch. This is a free movie series. You just have to register for tickets through the Keith Albee website. It's renovated. It's brand-new. It's sparkly. Everyone who went this past weekend to visit the My Brother, My Brother and Me Candle Nights event said it was beautiful inside, and I'm so excited that they're opening it up to the public for free. So please take advantage of this, spread some holiday, or experience some holiday magic, experience some movie magic. Can you imagine? In the Keith Albee, it's going to be really great. And I think the film starts at seven o'clock, so there's still time to go ahead and reserve your free tickets to go see an awesome family fun movie this Tuesday, next Tuesday, and the Tuesday after that. Oh, and I think the tickets are limited to five tickets per email address, according to the Facebook announcement. And then outside of that, man, I want to talk about my high school childhood experience. I was fourteen years old, and I, my mom signed me up to an after-school program. It was called the Teen Opportunity Program. It was down on Seventh Avenue, close to Hal Greer. And the building, I don't think is really there anymore. It got knocked down. At any rate, it was an incredibly transformative experience for myself. Every Tuesday and Thursday, I'd get picked up by a van down in Cerito, West Virginia. Wayne County kid. And they would drive me over to the Teen Opportunity Program and a bunch of kids from Huntington, I guess Huntington High, and maybe East was still around back then? I can't remember. Cabal Medland, bunch of people. They'd bust them all in, anybody that wanted to participate. And there were local kids, et cetera. Some people would walk, a couple of kids would walk. And we would be there from four o'clock till, I guess, eight o'clock. So I did that Tuesdays and Thursdays for four hours, my freshman year, my sophomore year, my junior year, my senior year. That was the program that showed me the importance of not being a hypocrite. Sorry. I made some great friends, and I learned a lot of life lessons. It, I got to meet some incredible mentors and adults who showed me what it was like to help other people and make a difference. It was life-changing. So when we talk about after-school programs, I will be the first person to stand up and say they're important and that we have to fight for them. We have to fight for them as much as we fight for early education for our toddlers to have the best daycares. We have to fight for them as much as we have to fight for school, public school reform, so that our children in public schools have the best education and that all of them have equal individual access to great, great, great education. After-school programs are just one of the part of taking care of the children in our community. And unfortunately, when you talk about whether you're taking care of a toddler or an elementary-aged kid, or a middle schooler, or a high schooler, until they turn eighteen, it's our responsibility to show them and mentor them and guide them to be the best that they can possibly be, because eventually, they're going to be the people that sit up here, like, like me. Who would have thought I'd be up here? I didn't. So when I hear that our community centers and after-school programs are in jeopardy or are being threatened, I would plead to anyone and everyone watching and every city council person up here, and Mayor Farrell, absolutely, your influence on this cannot be understated. I would ask all of us to fight for our children, even if they're fourteen and fifteen and sixteen and seventeen, because it matters, and I can personally attest to it. And it's Christmas. Getting an eviction notice during the holidays is just a really, really cruel, cruel card to play. Instead, whatever the reason there is, whatever the why, because we might never know, what we should do is work towards a solution to make sure that organizations like the Positive People's Association can still keep going. Half of anything when working with kids is just showing up. And people like you, people like you, they show up and do the work. And we should applaud them and support them. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jason Arthur.
Good evening. I just attended the Marine Corps. I wanted to thank them for hosting its detachment three forty for the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. It was the eighty-fourth anniversary that took place at Harris Riverfront Park. There were some great speakers, including our mayor, Congresswoman Carol Miller. I wish more could have attended. I've noticed through the years that I've been to this that the numbers continue to kind of decline a little bit with our veterans and so on. But an outstanding job of the mayor, as well as our Congresswoman and the people that attended. And again, thank you for the Marine Corps that put that together. Thank you.
Ms. Holly Smith-Mout.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Actually, on the way down here, I was thinking of if we wanted to increase our engagement and viewership. I envisioned, it's a shame because I ducked out, because I envisioned like a ticker of school closings along the bottom of our meetings, and that might get people to... I don't know why that crossed my mind on the way down here, because I got a two-hour delay message on the way here, and I was like, oh, maybe we should throw a ticker up. Anyways, you know, Mr. Branch, I know we can't have a dialogue right now per the rules, but let's talk after. I'm sorry this is happening to you. I agree with Ms. Rumball's sentiments that when we live in a community where drugs are such an issue, we've got to start with prevention, and we've got to start really throwing some weight and some effort, even there's so many people in our community doing so much. I mean, you mentioned a couple entities. We need all of it, because an ounce of prevention really is worth a pound of cure. And what we're dealing with right now in our community is having to shell out money for the cure when we have avenues of prevention. So let's you and I chat, and we'll, you know, catch me up. I've got a little information from some folks, but we'll chat, okay? It was a big weekend at the Keith Albee. It was, and I love to see it happen, because it was, it was a lot of money to spend a few years ago. You know, that wasn't a small decision that was made by council to invest as part of that restoration effort. And it's so lovely to see it glowing, because I remember thinking we had two options. One, put the money in it and fix it up, or two, just let it rot and sink into a hole in downtown. And where it's attached to other buildings, that would have been a bad choice. So I, it's good to see it shining and folks coming in and out. And I will say this weekend, there were people in, literally from all over the world, there were people that came in from the UK for candle nights. That has a draw to it that I never really knew. I listened to one other podcast. They're hilarious. I, it was just really interesting. I was, I was downtown in one of our shops, and of some couple, the first few customers that came in, I just was like, well, because I'm nosy. That's how I end up dead. I'm nosy. I asked, oh, where are you from? You know, are you from here? And they said, oh, no, I'm from Orlando, and they're here for candle nights. The next people that came in the same shop, they were from Atlanta here for candle nights. And then the next couple, Nashville, they were here for candle nights. So it was really great to hear that, and a couple of them said, oh, this town is so cool. And I'm like, isn't it? You want to move here? You know, recruiting people, mayor, left and right. One vendor, one of our downtown businesses actually shared with me that this past weekend was better than Small Business Saturday for her. That's how much money she made. And that is really good to hear, because we need that, we need that, right? On a lot of different levels. One of my, one of the local drinkeries that was, you know, near the Keith Albee said that they had to send out an SOS to get extra staff to come in and help. That's how many people were there. So really, really great win overall for the city of Huntington over the weekend, and appreciation to the McElroy family for doing this podcast, because who didn't, who didn't thump? I didn't know how big of a following it was. That event was a fundraiser for Harmony House, for our local day shelter, and it raised thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, which is really great for, to help our homeless residents in the city of Huntington with our day services. Which leads me to my last thing. We are preparing for the upcoming PIT count, which is our point-in-time count for the unsheltered. In the month of January, we do it on the same day every year, just to, you know, eliminate inconsistencies. It's not a major so much, it's just like one metric that we use to compare year over year. It's required by HUD. And just talk about the importance of housing, because we've heard, you know, let's talk after about this, the housing thing, because I heard a little bit from someone else, and I feel like I'm getting bits and pieces, and I may be able to help a little bit. The RCCR thing, the Pritchard Building, that's amazing. I mean, that's senior living. That's wonderful, income-based. The Spire Properties on Hal Greer on Eighth, going in across the bridge, again, you're like right there by the, I get my hair done right down the street, so. This is all great. Any housing at all helps. I just want to share, because we got notice today that the, it's called a NOFO, a Notice of Funding Opportunity from HUD, was put on pause. And that is good, because the, when it came out last month, it, the impacts of that would have been devastating, especially on a community like ours. It called for like a really massive cut to permanent housing, and permanent housing is for seniors and the disabled. So these are people who cannot work, and it was going to cut it by like seventy percent, which meant thousands of people would have been essentially put on the street. So I want to share just a few numbers, and I know facts don't change feelings, and feelings don't change facts. However, I am a numbers person, and so I want to share just a little bit, and I'm watching the clock too, about what we're dealing with, what we're seeing here locally as we lead up to the PIT count, because last, last year, it was kind of flat. This year, you just really, you really never know. It depends on a lot of factors, but our day services downtown, in the year of twenty-twenty-five, we have seen a thirty-two percent increase in the number of clients that we've seen over the year, mainly over the past few months, past five to six months. That is substantial, because last year in twenty-twenty-four, it actually went down. The average number of folks that we were servicing went down. Last month in November alone, we saw twenty-one veterans. We had an increase over the whole year of twenty-twenty-five. This is categorized as people over fifty-five years or older. The senior population, folks who identified as a senior, we saw a fifty-six percent increase in that, sixty-two percent increase in children. Last year, it went down, so we're seeing so many more kids coming into the services. The domestic violence increase is forty-two percent. That means we're seeing so much more domestic violence. The amount of people who do not have income, who do not have food stamps, who do not have access to health insurance has increased at a remarkable rate over this year. And these are things that some of them last year remained level or went down. And I know we talk a lot about mental illness and substance uses were being an issue. It is an issue. We know that. But of all the things that increased over the past year, those two increased the least. So we're seeing a shift in our population. Yes, drugs, yes, mental health, that's, you know, the pound of cure, right? That we're trying to ward off, and hopefully, our... know, the, the pound of cure, right, that we're trying to ward off, and hopefully, our, our appeal will go well, and we can hit that from all angles. But I think it's important that we realize that we're seeing mamas and papas, and we're seeing kids, and it's, it's devastating. So I want us to keep all of that in mind as we start talking about housing and get more housing, and as we work through the things to fix homelessness and mitigate it. You know, there are some folks that will just never come inside. We know that, for whatever reason, but we certainly can, one person at a time, one house at a time through RCCR, one apartment building at a time, get people, and any housing helps. Any housing alleviates a little bit of that stress that comes with the need for housing, right? So I just, let's see. I think that's about it. I just kind of wanted to keep everyone in the same loop and say, you know, this is what we're seeing. These are the changes we're seeing. All the services that we have in this city, the Hub, Harmony House, Prestera, OVP, Marshall Valley, all those folks, the Health Department, you know, it really does take a village, and it takes everyone rowing in the same direction to reverse some of these trends, and I think that we'll get there, but that Notice of Funding Opportunity being paused was a good thing, and what I'm hoping is, is that the new one that they come up with will be a little bit more well-thought-through and something that doesn't get dropped on us with a month-and-a-half notice, because the other alarming part of it was, oh, this starts immediately, like at the beginning of the year, which left a lot of folks scrambling, and it's already a system that is so fragile, because we're understaffed in this area in social work, in case management, mental, mental health support. It was something that I don't think any community was prepared for, so the fact that it's paused is a good thing for us, and it gives time for all of us to, that work in homelessness services, to regroup, figure out what's going to happen next, and figure out where we go from here. So that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Archer. With passion. All right, we'll wrap things up. I know they mentioned the Keith Albee. If you've not been there, around dusk, depending on what light comes up on that thing, it looks like all of a sudden that the clouds parted and sunshine hit 4th Avenue. It is bright, to say the least. So they did a good job, at least. You can't drive by and not wonder what it is, because it stands out now. Yep. Want to talk about our Geller Village Neighborhood Association. Kim and Laura head that up. They do a really good job. I went to the square yesterday. If you're not familiar with the square, it's right in front of the 911 Center. They're putting up a lot of nice decorations. You know, unbelievable job what they do when you drive by on Norway, putting it all out. They're going to have a nice little snow pit tonight. They have Santa, the cookies and cocoa with Santa. They'll be able to make snowballs, all that stuff. These are artificial, but the way things are going, we might have real ones. But all in all, they do a really good job at decorating that on a very shoestring budget. So I want to thank those ladies. And to piggyback off of, you know, kind of what Holly was talking about, for those who don't know, I've been in the hospitality industry for 10 years, and the last week, the week and a half, I've had two family of four looking for a place to stay in cold weather. Turning to hoteliers, asking us, "What can you do?" These people don't have mental issues. They're not substance abuse. It's just literally a family of four that fell on some hard times, and now they're, they're looking for services. You know, like I said, two people in a week and a half-ish, in 10 years, it's never been asked of me. So that's concerning in itself. Some of the metrics she talked about that were level, yes. Some of the other metrics, it could be grandparents with grandchildren. There are a lot of those scenarios as well, but it's something to obviously keep an eye on and see what we can do to rectify those things. But with that, I'm not going to keep anyone any longer with the temperature dropping. Be safe getting home this evening. You all have a great evening. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.